Commute to our September 26 regular scheduled school board meeting. We want to thank Deputy Bartman that's in the back. Thank you from Spotsylvania County Sheriff's Department for being with us this evening. We have a quorum. Dr. Meyer is absent and we have six members present. We'd like to have Mr. Blaine lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Blaine, thank you. Moving on to 1.03, the Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt the agenda that's presented in front of you.
Someone?
Moved by Ms. Blaylock. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Motion carries 6-0. The agenda is adopted. We have no public hearing this evening, so we'll move on to 3.01. Instructional highlights. Ms. Leonard, the value of the writing process.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. This evening, we are going to acknowledge about how important writing is and how important it is and how critical it is to the child's literacy development. To support this necessary literacy component, teachers integrate writing practice into daily instruction. And this evening, we have Robert E. Lee Elementary School be sharing the value of the writing process. Teacher Jeanette Carter, along with some of our first grade students, will highlight the importance of teacher feedback as a critical component to the writing process.
Turned on there?
Thank you. Good evening. And thank you so much for this opportunity to come in and share with you one of the innovative ways that we're working at Robert E. Lee to integrate those 21st century skills with our content area instruction, in this case with writing. I have brought with you some of, I have brought with me some of my students to share some of that writing with you tonight, but before I start that, I wanted to give you a little bit of background onto what we did in my first grade class. And these are my students from last year, so they are now second graders, moving on. I was a part of the device pilot program last year, and my goal was to help my first grade students better engage in the writing process. First graders have so many great stories to tell, but for those beginning readers and writers, it comes with its own set of challenges to get those stories down on paper. So my goal was to find a way to develop a process to better support the students throughout the entire writing process, from their idea through their final copy, in order to support them with better feedback and templates and support throughout the process. I also really wanted to support them in becoming producers of digital content instead of just users or consumers of that. The students, the stories they're sharing here tonight, they wrote and illustrated on the computer, but it's so much more than just typing up a final copy. From the start of their first draft, they used templates in Google Classroom and were supported throughout the revision and editing using individualized feedback videos that I recorded with their, my voice and their writing and my comments and feedback using screencasting extensions through Google Chrome that they were then able to look at to have that individualized personal feedback, so much more than one teacher could provide to all of the students in a daily writing block. I have some examples for you to kind of show the impact of that feedback and that extra support. You can see on these next couple of slides, the first draft and then with the students, we're able to do the growth that you see, the revision to answer reader questions, to add more details, and specific teaching points that we were working on in class. This was two rounds of revision on this one. And just looking at the growth in the students and what they were able to achieve with just that extra level of support, students not always being able to read and understand written feedback, the videos brought it to a whole new level of them really being able to appreciate and act on my feedback for them. This story you'll hear tonight from Philip, seeing as the story came along through his different stages. We're gonna skip this first story here, and I'm gonna invite Ms. Leann up to share her writing with you. Come on up, Leann. Leann wrote a personal narrative. This is one that she chose, that she was really proud of from last year to share with you called Mickey Mouse Birthday.
On Saturday, it was my brother's birthday. We had to sing Mickey Mouse. My cousin Brooklyn started a cake, cake fight. Then my cousin Shayna stuffed a cupcake in Braden's face. Mine had the most cupcake in my, in, on my face. Shayna stuffed another cupcake on Braden's face. Shayna stuffed a cupcake in my face, too. I said, "Stop Shayna," and she stopped. Then everybody had cupcake in their face. Everybody was laughing at Brooklyn because she was still putting cupcake in her face. It was really funny. My brother was laughing, too. My brother Mason is one. When we were done eating the cake, my brother Mason said, "One." Then Jennifer said, "Let's go wash our face." We said, "Okay." Then we went to the bathroom to wash our face. Me, Braden, Emma, and Brooklyn went to the tire swing. It was fun. I liked Daddy's house.
Next, Philip is gonna share, this is a fiction story that he wrote called "The Pizza Store."
Bone and his dog Nina were at the beach. They wanted to get pizza. "I want pepperoni," said Bone. They drove in the car to the pizza store. They did not find the pizza they, that they liked. Bone said, "Oh, no, I want pepperoni pizza." They were sad. They went to a different store and saw the pizza that they, they liked, that they got the money. "And I want a large pepperoni pizza," said Bone. "I got the pizza for Nina," and they ate the large pepperoni pizza all by themselves.
All right. Lily is now gonna come up and share with you, come on up Lily, some of the reflections that our class had as far as what they learned about using the computers, how computers helped them with writing, and what they can do now that they didn't used to be able to do before working on computers with writing.
I learned how to log on the computers, write with them, use the pictures, use the classroom, take care of the computers so they don't fight.
One of our friends who wasn't able to join us here tonight also wanted to share some things that the students felt computers helped them do specifically with their writing. They really said, "The videos helped give us ideas. Videos are better than the teacher writing it down. It's really hard to read. Instead, just tell us what to do on a video." And the video helps you know what to fix and what to say. So they did recognize that support was very helpful for them. And to finish out, each of the students had a favorite thing about using computers for writing, so if I can ask my three friends to come back on up. One who is not here tonight had a very insightful reflection that computers don't make paper sounds that annoy you. Really liked that clean typing on the computer. Leann, come on up first.
You don't have to dig to find the pages like in your journal.
So Leann appreciated the organization of Google Drive and Google Classroom and how everything was right there when she needed it.
You didn't have to draw pictures, just insert the, and draw, drag them.
Very good. The illustrating was definitely a favorite part.
You can, you can use, you can, you can fix words on the computer.
Very good. And the students really did appreciate that everything looked clean when they were done. They didn't have their eraser marks. They could backspace and delete what they needed to and have the opportunity to really do their best work. So closing out, I just wanna say that I'm so proud of all of our students here tonight and all of our students at Robert E. Lee who are working so hard not only to grow their writing skills, but also learning to do these kind of things and create this digital work independently and learn to operate and use computers and these programs at just six and seven years old when they're still learning to read. And I really thank all of you for your support in putting those tools in the students' hands and giving us the opportunity to do programs like this at our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanna take this opportunity to, if there's any board members that would like to make a comment, please.
Just great job.
I'd like to ask a question, if I may. How much time do you spend in a day with computers with any given group of children?
We, really, we use them all throughout the day. During reading and math stations for different practice activities, these that we were using specifically in writing, I use kind of a station model. So I would have about half of the students working on writing their stories on the computer and half working on writing on paper. And that was what we had worked out to kind of share the devices. There was a little bit of a learning curve with them using, learning how to use them independently and troubleshoot the issues like when they close the browser or, you know, type in a password incorrectly, but they really became really independent with those really quickly.
And how many computers do you have in the classroom?
Last year, I had 22 students and I had 11 devices, so it was a half-class then.
That works pretty well, that ratio?
I found that it did work well. At this level of students, I wouldn't want to have a computer in front of every student just with the support that they sometimes do need. We teach small group so much throughout our day and really find that that's an effective way to teach anything, so I think with using the devices, it's the same, same idea.
And finally, were you usually in the classroom as the sole adult or did you have assistance?
I had support from our ITRT, Erin West. She was extremely helpful in not only supporting the students with what they were doing, but as I was going through this pilot, sharing different resources with me and developing our templates and coming up with plans of, you know, the lesson plans of how to teach students how to do this.
And that assistance was apparently very valuable.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, good. Well, thanks and congratulations to all the students as well as teacher.
Yes.
Ms. Shelley?
You mentioned the piloting the program. Are you going to be sharing it with other schools or within your school and then going from there? When I hear pilot, I'm thinking it's, we're starting small and we're gonna get bigger.
Yes.
So are you gonna be training or with the ITRT?
Yes. I presented at LLE over the summer and have shared all of the resources that we developed last year and my ideas and the programs that I found effective with a lot of educators through that, as well as sharing within our school. And I hope it does spread because I found it to be very effective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Any other, any other questions? We want to thank you for all the work that you've done, and we want to thank these young students that came up and read their stories to us. Not only are they very intelligent, they're adorable. Let's give them a round of applause. Moving on to 4.01, 2016 Virginia Athletic Trainers Association Secondary School Athletic Trainer of the Year. Ms. Leonard?
Thank you again. At this time, we would like to recognize Sarah Whiteside, Athletic Trainer at Chancellor High School. Unfortunately, Ms. Whiteside is not able to be with us this evening. She's actually at a field hockey game doing her role, but we still would like to take a moment to read and acknowledge Ms. Whiteside. We're pleased to share that Ms. Whiteside has been named recipient of the Virginia Athletic Trainers Association 2016 Vito Perrello Secondary School Athletic Trainer of the Year Award. The VATA Athletic Trainer of the Year Award is given to a qualified, certified athletic trainer who is considered by their peers to be an invaluable member of the athletic training community in Virginia. Congratulations to her on this distinguished honor, and we are thankful that she is committed to the safety and the health of our students.
Let's give her a round of applause and abstention. I would like to ask the Board's deference to make a special award recognition yesterday, I mean, on Saturday, we had our 11th Annual Race Against Teen Violence, and our very own superintendent came in third place for the age 45 to 49. Age group. A blistering time on the 5K of 25 minutes and 5 seconds. We look at him and you see that Clark Kent.
You have to say my age?
You see him and you see that Clark Kent look, but I tell you, he has the reflexes of a puma. And we're, we're really proud of him, and that's an excellent accomplishment, and we just want to give him a round of applause. Let's give him a round of applause.
My colleague, my colleague Carol Leonard, I believe, came in fourth in her age range.
Do we don't wanna say the age bracket? Moving on to 5.01, I know better than the ghost talking about a woman's age. Now, moving on to 5.01, public comments. Dr. Martin?
Good evening. The public comments of our Board means is a time to receive recommendations, suggestions, concerns, and comments from the general public. Each speaker is allotted five minutes. We ask that they clearly state their name, address, and/or voting district for the Board. A speaker may request additional time for the Board should one's five-minute allotment expire. We ask that you keep your comments focused on the issues and that all speakers maintain a level of decorum and mutual respect for one another. As the Chairman, I don't think we have anyone signed up at this time.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the Board? Please come forward, please.
Good evening. Carolyn Luter, 9810 Poplar Forest Road, Lee Hill School District, and I'm here actually representing Lee Hill Elementary School. We are having a special book fair in November with The Diary of the Wimpy Kid, and we are trying to get the author, Jeff Kenny, to come. And I'd like Mrs. Blaylock, who is our representative, to come because a part of the book story talks about the cheese touch. So we are going to have Ms. Blaylock have the cheese touch and then spread that all around with her smaller sample. Okay? So now you have the cheese touch for all the world to see. So this is your smaller version. Here's your sticker. You make sure the kids get it. They saw us, here's your smaller version to pass around. And as you pass people the cheese touch, make sure you sticker them.
Got it.
Okay, we'll see you November 1st at Barnes &amp; Noble. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Luter. Is there, is there another speaker that would like to address the Board? Is there another speaker? Seeing none, we'll close public comments and move to Board Member Comments. We'll start with Mr. Twig. No comments. Mr. Blaine?
I have no comments.
Ms. Graham?
Oddly, I do. I just wanna congratulate the Spotsylvania Knights Marching Band for their performance at Hermitage High School competition this past weekend. They were first place in the auxiliary color guard, first place in marching, second place overall in Class A, and also special congratulations to Director Brian Jacobs for receiving the Clyde L. Hughes Junior Directors Award.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Ms. Blaylock?
Just a reminder that this week is our back-to-school evenings. Tuesday night, elementary. Wednesday night is high school. And is Wednesday night, Mr. Wolf, will you confirm that?
Hi.
High school's Wednesday night. Middle school is Thursday. Check with your school for the specific times, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Ms. Shelley?
I just wanna say thank you for allowing us to participate in the Braswell Run Against Teen Violence. It was, it was a lot of fun, a wonderful turnout. Mrs. Blaylock and I walked it, and I think we did very well, and it was, that's okay. But we had, it was, it was a wonderful time. Thank you. And for a great purpose.
Well, I thank you, and I want to thank this community as a whole. I had an opportunity to speak to some of the members of the Board of Supervisors, and I thank them for their support from the county. I thank the School Division for its support of this race that we hold every year, which was the 11th Annual Race. I thank all the citizens of the Spotsylvania County for their continued support as we continue to raise awareness about the dangers of teen violence in our community and the damage that it's creating or that it creates, not only towards the families of the victims, but the families of the perpetrators. And so we continue to speak out as loudly as we can for anyone that would listen to us, and we are so delighted that Cortland High School continues to host it graciously. We had over 1,000 runners, you know, sign up and, and run the race. We are excited that every year it continues to grow. And I would just wanna just say thank you once again to everyone, not only for their support physically, but for their continued prayers for me and my family as we continue to deal with the loss of a child from a sentence of active violence. With that being said, I had a great opportunity today to go to Cortland High School and have an opportunity to speak to a group called the IAAM, the Inspired African American Males Group, and it was a really good conversation. Ms. Driest is a retired teacher, but she still insists on keeping that program running and running well, and she's training up some other teachers to continue to keep that program vibrant and alive. And it would be my desire for other high schools to adopt the same model that they have at Cortland with the Inspired African American Male Group. It is a great thing to see these young people inspired to meet the requirements, the high requirements, to be a part of this organization and this club. So I was really thrilled to have an opportunity to be a guest speaker at it. If other schools intend to or would like to start something of that nature up, I'd ask you to get with Ms. Driest, and I would love to come and speak at your inaugural presentations. That being said, I close my comments, and I turn over to 5.03 Superintendent for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, very briefly, I wanted to acknowledge that last week was a week that we honor, at least in the tradition of the weeks, our maintenance and custodial staff, and I would like to just acknowledge the fine staff that we have across the Board in terms of how they, they function as a team, how they work to make our buildings and our learning environments, you know, ideal for our, all of our students. And I continue to compliment all of the folks that work in operations because they maintain an intentional focus, that they are here to support the main business of education, which is learning in the classroom. And if you, and I know all of you have, been out to our schools and you not only see the visible effort that is put forth, but you also, I know that our custodians are often the ones that are the first to greet you, the first to make you feel at home in our schools and in our buildings, and I want to acknowledge that they are a part of our mission, which is together. So I thank them for their work. We also, I know most everyone is aware, but just another opportunity to acknowledge that Spotsylvania County can boast of having the Region 3 Teacher of the Year, Carolyn Kleiner from Freedom Middle School, and we're very proud of her and look forward to her being acknowledged on October 17th at the state level as she vies for the state award. And I also like to thank, I think Katrina Dix is with us this evening, and she wrote a very nice article, I think, capturing that moment. And for those of us that had the opportunity to be there, it was quite a moment, and I wanna thank all of the staff, not only mine, but Freedom, who, it's not easy to keep something like that under wraps, and for it to be such a nice surprise for the entire student body. And then finally, I wanted to let the Board know as a reminder that this week, beginning tomorrow, over a three-day period, I believe the state will bring some closure to some of the accountability results that are often shared throughout the state. Those include on-time graduation rate, SAT averages across schools and divisions, and then advanced placement statistics. Just in a nutshell, for us, our on-time graduation rate appears to be fairly steady, though just slightly down from 90.24 at about 89.54 is what I've most recently been quoted, which keeps us about level, not advancing like we would like to, but we will continue to be focusing on that. Our SAT, we saw jumps in all three levels this year, but still not where we wanna be. But we did see some good improvement across both reading, writing, and mathematics. And then our AP statistics in terms of both students who are enrolled in courses as well as students who are scoring three or better, slightly up, not again as, as high as we would like, but again making some, some steady incremental progress. So I wanted to share that. Also, the state will be unveiling, rather than what are called division and school report cards, are gonna be quality profiles, and so we look forward to seeing what that looks like. But that will be part of, I think, the new system that we will see in terms of accountability reporting for all school divisions for the near future. So thank you for this time.
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Moving on to 6.01, Board Committee Reports. Do we have any Board Committee Reports? Seeing none. Or did you?
Did you wanna report on the Food Task Force? I'll let Ms. Shelley, Ms. Shelley and I attended the Food Task Force. I will let her.
That's, I just wanted to say that we had a Food Task Force meeting this past week, and we discussed the number of students who are on our free and reduced lunch, our negative balances, and we're about where we were last year. Not a lot of changes at this point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Shelley. Any other Board Committee Reports?
Audit and Finance, Ms. Graham and I met in that as well. Went well, as you all have seen in our Board Current. You are up to date.
Thank you. Seeing no other reports, we'll move on to the Consent Agenda, 7.01, 7.02, and 7.03. Dr. Martin?
On the consent agenda this evening, the memorandums of agreement between the Executive Directive Head Start and Spotsylvania County School Board, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Office of Transportation Services, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Health Services, SCPS Head Start and SCPS Early Childhood Special Education, and SCPS Head Start and Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University for its Virginia Cooperative Extension. We also have the minutes of the September 12, 2016 regular meeting and donations, which are usual and customary. Staff ask that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Do we have a motion to accept a consent agenda? Moved by Ms. Shelley, seconded by Ms. Blaylock. Any, any questions? We can call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none, the consent agenda is accepted 6-0. Moving on to 8.01, Interior Lighting Replacement, IFB 08312016-1400, Mr. Hockaday.
Good evening, Mr. Braswell, members of the Board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. The project will be for the replacement of the existing lighting and switches at Brock Road Elementary, Robert E. Lee Elementary, River Run School Board, and the CTE Building with LED lighting, low voltage controls, power packs, occupancy sensors, and daylight harvesting sensors, while we're using power wiring, conduits, and boxes whenever possible. The work includes, but is not limited to, light fixture removal, electrical work, removal of controls and device programming. The procurement was advertised on Eva, Virginia's statewide electronic procurement website, and posted on the division's website. The following bids were received. Express Electric Company was $2,480,000. Hazard Electrical Cooperative was $1,956,220. Work will begin within seven days of the award, and the final completion date is July 17. Work will begin within seven days of the award, and the final completion date is July 6, 2017. The recommendation is to accept the low bid of $1,956,220 submitted by Hazard Electrical Corporation. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for your presentation. Do we have any questions? Well, before... Have a motion? Motion by Ms. Shelley. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Graham. Any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Shelley.
How does this fall with what we had planned in our CIP, the amount?
Well, there's two things. One thing, the way the bid was placed, we can do all of those projects, or we can select certain ones. So that is for the total amount of all buildings, or we can select two or three of those to do. The total amount is more than what we had originally had in our CIP, but there is enough in the CIP to do three of the projects. If we don't do vocational this year, and we put the others together, there's enough in the CIP to cover those projects and move forward. We did have, as part of our CIP, we did have three lighting projects in there for this upcoming year, and we have more to come over the next few years. To... Just to give a little background, as part of our energy management program, we had started on the conversion from fluorescent to LED lights. And one of the driving factors is, as of July of 2012, the government regulations stopped the production of T-12 lighting in the United States. Not only did it stop the production of the bulbs, they also stopped the production of the ballast. Now, there is... After that, whatever was left in stock could still be sold, and for a while, there was some import from other countries, but they couldn't be produced in this country. As a result, the fixtures, the bulbs, everything, the cost on that skyrocketed because people were trying to buy up what was left in stock. But it wasn't only limited to T-12 lighting. It was also covers some T-8 lighting and some other lights as well. They went back and made some changes to that in Congress, but the act still stands in place. T-12 lighting, there can be no more produced in the United States, and most... And part of T-8 lighting has gone away. There are several advantages to going to T-8s when they... To T... For LED, I'm sorry. When they... When they passed this law, their LED lighting was not at the point it was now. The industry has made several advances over the past couple of years, and we feel they've gotten to the point where they standard... Has standardized the bulbs, the fixtures, to where there's not one company that's producing everything. Now you can go to a local vendor or hardware store and buy LED lights, and you're not strapped down to one person or one company that's providing that. The payback, we've estimated that for these projects is, if you group them as a whole, is about a six-year return. So it'll take about six years. The savings you get will pay for the project in six years, and then after that, your savings is your actual savings, your actual reducing your expenses by that much. But beyond the savings, and I'll go down the reasons why it saves, not only does the... Is the wattage less of which you're using. Because of the type of light, you also can reduce the number of fixtures you have or the number of bulbs you have. It doesn't provide the heat load that fluorescent light does, so it doesn't put extra heat into the area, so therefore, you save on cooling costs. You also have a big savings in maintenance. Because LEDs last longer, and they don't have the external ballast, you don't have the replacement cost and time of replacing both of those. But as much as that's a benefit, and we know from government regulation that something has to be done, I think the bigger benefit is in the classroom itself. There's a lot of studies out there that show that going to LED provides a more comfortable atmosphere for students. The lighting provides better light for such things as art and doing projects. It's also very beneficial to students that have special needs, especially autism and sensory disorders. There was a huge study done in Scottsdale, Arizona recently that shows that the low-visual flicker, they call it, that you get from fluorescent lighting, the students couldn't recognize that with LED lighting, so they were able to focus more. The students with sensory disorders do not hear the buzzing sound because with LEDs, you do not have the buzzing sound that comes from fluorescent lighting. They reported lower repetitive behaviors, such as often goes with autism and other disorders, lower amount of headaches, lower eye strain as well. So I think as much as it's a benefit in cost and savings, the real factor is we're providing a better environment for students to learn in.
Any other questions?
Just a follow-up comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Blaylock.
I really appreciate you doing that, Mr. Hockaday, because I think that sort of spelled it out for the community of what we're doing. But I would just want to reiterate, and please stop me if I'm wrong, we were going this direction regardless. Like any technology, this is now becoming passed not to go with LED. And also, it's CIP money. A lot of times, when you see the high-dollar figure, the community can get confused with it being instruction money. That's two different colors of money. It could not be used for instruction anyway. But as you said, the benefits, the payout, we talked about this years ago. We knew we were going this way. So I'm glad to see it on the table. I just wanted to reiterate those things. With it being a high price on it, I wanted to make sure that the community understood. So that explanation was very helpful. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Blaylock. Mr. Blaine.
I especially want to thank you for that excellent explanation that you just finished giving us about LEDs and why they're important, how they work, and the benefit of them. I'm almost sold on going home and replacing all my light fixtures right away. But genuine... A genuine compliment that's, I'm sure, is helpful to all of us, not just me.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other questions? I just want to add that some of the benefits that you mentioned that were not financial are, in fact, very valid. I had the opportunity to put some LED lighting in my own house, and it... My ability to read for longer periods of time increased significantly just because the change in the lighting. And I didn't realize it was that significant until I actually put one in and saw for myself. So I just wanted to share that. Thank you for sharing not only the economic benefits, but also the benefits to our students and their learning as you gave your presentation. Thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. The motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move on to 8.02 Approval of Exclusive Easement to Spotsylvania County and Non-Exclusive Easement to Verizon Contractor for Access to County Water Tank Site at Battlefield Elementary. Mr. Upperco.
Thank you, Chairman Braswell, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. Spotsylvania County has entered into a licensing agreement with Verizon Wireless to lease a portion of the Battlefield Elementary Water Tank site. And that site is actually owned by the county, even though it sits on school property. The purpose would be to install telecommunications equipment there. Spotsylvania County is seeking from the school division ingress and egress to the water tank site and water line via an exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way. In addition, the Verizon contractor, who will actually install the telecommunications equipment on the county water tank, is seeking approval from the board for a 20-foot-wide non-exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way that also provides ingress and egress to the fenced water tank site. What you essentially have is one project. The vendor would go from Levels Road... The easement would go from Levels Road to the fenced-in area where the tank sits, and then the county easement would go within the fenced area to the water tank itself. It sounds complicated. It's not really as complicated as it sounds, frankly. These corresponding easements are necessary to bring this project to successful completion. They've been both vetted by the school board attorney, and the recommendation would be that the board approve the exclusive perpetual easement and right-of-way to Spotsylvania County and the non-exclusive perpetual easement to the Verizon contractor in support of the license agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Upperco. Do we have a motion?
I will.
Moved by Ms. Blaylock, seconded by Mr. Blaine. Any comments or questions? Mr. Blaine.
This is a non-exclusive easement, according to this. And does that mean if a Verizon competitor comes in to us or to put similar equipment on that water tank that they would have by the ability to do that, assuming they could agree, come to agreement on a contract?
Correct. The exclusive easement goes to the county, but the non-exclusive easement goes to the vendor. So they technically could change in the future to a different vendor as necessary as the contract ran out.
Thank you.
I'd also add that all work to be done would be done during non-school hours, and the principal of the school would be contacted prior to any work would be scheduled.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much.
9.01 and 9.02 informational items. Ms. Leonard, moving on. 10.01, any unfinished business? Any unfinished business? Seeing none. 10.02, news business? Any new business? New business? Oh. Okay. No. Okay. We'll move on to closed-meeting items. It would be resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of candidates for employment, assignment, promotion, demotion, and the discipline of employees or resignation of employees who have a contractual commitment to the board as permitted by 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia, and consideration of student disciplinary appeals as permitted by Section 2.2-3711A2 of the Code of Virginia. We have a motion. Moved by Ms. Graham, second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. We are in closed session.
To re-enter open session?
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Do we have a second? Seconded by Mr. Blaine. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now back in open session. Motion carries 6-0. Certification of Closed Meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. We have a motion.
Sold.
Moved by Mr. Blaine, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in... Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Graham.
Graham, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Twig, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Blaylock, aye.
Shelley, aye.
Motion carries 6-0. Items from Closed Meeting. Dr. Martin.
Motion is that the school board accepts the recommendation of the superintendent for personnel appointments, assignments, resignations, retirement, and the request for extended leave of absence and terminations as presented in closed meeting and permitted by Section 2.2-3711A1 of the Code of Virginia.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Do we have a motion?
I will move the recommended action.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. Motion carries 6-0. 14.01 Adjournment. Do we have a motion?
I move to adjourn.
Moved to adjourn by Ms. Graham. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Shelley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposes? Most... This meeting is adjourned.